Introduce yourselves, please.
Elizabeth Edwardson, Associate Planner.
Madeline Palmquist, District Eight.
Ben Gudrow, Committee Manager.
Eric Daven, Commission Member.
Matt Zachary, Mayor, Committee Chair, Commission Chair.
Dennis Fox, Six Word Alderman.
Dean Veneman, Alderman, District Two.
Thank you. Item one, approval of the report from September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, Planning Commission meeting. Commission, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Daven, second by Palmquist. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. There's a motion by Daven, seconded by Palmquist, and the motion passed four to zero. Item two, twenty-four dash zero zero one nine eight one, Fund Star Services LLC, Public Hearing and Action on Request From Fund Star Services LLC For A Conditional Use Permit To Operate A Contractor Yard At Three Two One Fourth Avenue North, Parcel ID Three Four Zero One Eight Five Five, Which Falls Within The General Industrial M One District. Mr. Kearns?
I'm actually going to be presenting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, the applicant, Fund Far- Fund Star Services, sorry, is purchasing this parcel and is requesting to operate a contractor yard. The parcel is zoned General Industrial M One District and is over one acre in size. Tri-City Services LLC is an HVAC and plumbing company owned by the applicant, and they would be a tenant at this property. The prior use of the property was light manufacturing and offices for that use. As of now, the site is vacant. The building would be used as office space, warehouse space, sheet metal and plumbing shop, associated storage, and a training area. Excess office space, the applicant plans to rent to professional services uses, and contractor yards are conditional use in the M One District as are professional services. Conditional use permit standards of review. The parcel itself is one point six acres, it's rectangular, bound by streets on all four sides, for a total of one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of street frontage. Staff believe it's sufficient for the proposed contractor yard use. Professional services that may occur on the property in the future, the compatibility of which with the HVAC plumbing company, is unknown. However, it appears to be separated within the building and could be accessed separately from the contractor yard use. Surrounding properties are General Industrial M One District, except for those to the south, which are General Commercial B Two District. The surrounding properties primarily are used by a concrete company, but there are a few were previously paper mill properties and are vacant. The Planning Commission, in relation to the proximity to other properties, Planning Commission may, on a case-by-case, require a solid fence in areas where screening is needed to mitigate potential impacts to adjoining properties. As for pedestrian facilities and traffic safety and efficiency, staff did not see that as a concern, as the site is accessible from multiple streets and pedestrian facilities are sufficient. However, the parking lot itself is in disrepair, and the applicant has plans to repair that. Effects on the environment will be minimal, as the applicant actually plans to remove the existing dust collection system from the roof of the building, as it will no longer be needed. Operational hours are normal time, between seven thirty to four thirty P. M. Emergency operations on weekends and nights may occur. And staff believe this will be compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning districts. For site plan and architectural standards of review, the existing building on the property is non-conforming, as it does not meet the setbacks for the General Industrial M One District. However, Chapter eleven zoning does not prohibit it from being repaired, maintained, or renovated, or remodeled. The ingress and egress on-site is sufficient. As I said before, the applicant plans to repair the existing parking areas, but has not yet submitted a site plan for that. However, they did reach out and note that these repairs may occur in the spring. There are no requirements for landscaping, as that is not a requirement for change of use, although parking lot reconstruction, repaving, does require twenty-five percent of the landscaping points to be installed, if that is pursued. And the applicant does plan to perform exterior improvements to the building, including overhead doors, entry doors, and removal of the dust collection system. Lighting is not proposed, as of now, for the project, and the applicant has not submitted a lighting plan. However, staff would recommend that be submitted, if lighting is to be part of the project, for review and approval by the Community Development Department. So, in summary, the recommendation for the project is to approve with conditions. Following conditions being applicable building permits for future site improvements shall be obtained. A separate conditional use permit shall be obtained for professional services unless related to the business, and minor modification to the plan shall be permitted to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department.
Thank you. Questions for staff? All right, at this time, I'll open it up to public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, please step forward for the first time.
There it is.
There it is. Hi, let's try this again. I'm Andrea from Tri-City Services, my husband Andy.
Andy.
So, we are just really hopeful that we get this approved. We're growing at a really quick rate, and we've outgrown our building that we're currently at, and we'd love to stay in the city, and this building really seems to fit our needs. If you have any questions, that would be great. Otherwise, everything is pretty well summarized by Liz, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For a second time, I call, anyone in favor, please step forward. And for a third time, anyone in favor, please step forward. All right, and anyone speaking against, calling for the first time, if you're speaking against this, please step forward. For a second time, anyone speaking against, please step forward. And for a third time, anyone speaking against, please step forward. All right, public hearing opened at four oh five, four oh six, and closed at four oh nine. All right, Commission?
I will, I guess, just first off saying, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to stay in the city and put some money into a building down by the mill. So, I'll make a motion to approve the Plan twenty-four dash one nine eight one, as presented with staff recommendations.
I will second and also commend the applicant. I think this is a good use of a building in our community that needs a new use to it, and I'm happy to see a local business growing, so I will second it.
I got a motion by Daven, seconded by Gudrow. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. Thank you. Item three, two four dash zero zero one eight three six, SN Ram Hotels LLC, Public Hearing and Action On Request From SN Ram Hotels LLC For A Conditional Use Permit To Conduct Outdoor Recreation Activities And Site Improvements At Four Five One East Grand Avenue, Parcel ID Three Four Zero Seven 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 Eight, Which Falls In The General Commercial B Two District. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to conduct outdoor recreation activities and site improvements at the Hotel Mead and Mead Resorts and Convention Center. These improvements include construction of a non-residential accessory building, pergola slash bandshell, installation of a over five thousand square foot volleyball court, and designating an area for yard games. The property is zoned General Commercial B Two District, and current uses on the property include overnight lodging, restaurant, and tavern. Details regarding the pergola or bandshell itself are limited from the applicant. We've received a rendering of that. Given multiple outdoor improvements are proposed, which are capable of drawing larger crowds, staff has defined it as a separate use, which is outdoor recreation, and that is a conditional use in the B Two District. The parcel itself is five point five acres. Given this size, staff believe it could reasonably accommodate another use such as outdoor recreation, as long as that is keeping in- keeping with the size and scale of the parcel and is appropriately located on the parcel. The proposed outdoor recreation use will complement the hotel tavern and restaurant uses on the site and are expected to draw in more business for the hotel. The location of the volleyball courts and yard game area is to be on the green space on the southwest side of the parcel, along East Grand Avenue. And the pergola or bandshell location is proposed to be on the southeastern corner of the property. Residential zoning districts do exist within three hundred feet of the pergola slash bandshell area, however, not the volleyball court yard game area. Traffic safety and efficiency is a concern due to the distracting, potential distracting nature of the proposed use, the volleyball courts and yard games, and their proximity to the public right-of-way and East Grand Avenue, which has an average annual, annual average daily traffic of two thousand six hundred vehicles. There's potential for objects to enter the road and cause accidents. The bandshell proximity to the intersection of two streets is also a concern for pedestrian and vehicular accidents. Staff recommends proper fencing and netting be required by the Planning Commission, if the use is approved, to ensure safety. Then, effects on the environment, several mature trees and shrubs have been removed for the installation of the volleyball court already. Operational hours have not been submitted, however, given the nature of the use, volleyball tournaments, leagues, it is a potential that the generation of noise and light from the outdoor recreation use may be a potential nuisance. Also, the pergola and bandshell was implied to have live music, bands, so that's also related to that. And site plan and architectural review, the setbacks have not been identified for the outdoor recreation area are shown on site plans submitted by the applicant. They also have not been shown for the pergola or bandshell. The volleyball courts themselves, if composed of sand, would not, would not affect the impervious surface ratio. However, the proximity of this material in particular to the public right-of-way may cause issues with runoff, stormwater, aesthetics of the downtown. As a structure, the volleyball court net itself, zoning code does allow for staff to grant exempt, exemption to setbacks, and staff is recommending that the setback be ten feet from the property line. The bandshell pergola site map, it's showing a two thousand square foot structure approximately. However, the height and other information has not been submitted. Forty by forty vision triangle does exist near the proposed location of the, the bandshell pergola at the intersection of Jackson and East Grand. Driveway standards are met, as the use does not change ingress egress to the site. You'll see pictures of the site, locations, the left being the volleyball court, yard game location, and right being the approximate pergola bandshell location. On the site, which is mostly composed of building and parking area, approximately two hundred twenty parking spaces appear to exist. The bandshell use would likely restrict parking during, during its use, which could significantly affect the parking availability on-site and shift guests to on-street locations or neighboring lots. Staff is requesting that current parking information be submitted, and if parking is to be added, that an updated site plan is submitted, which meets the parking requirements. At this time, there's no requirements for landscaping. The subject property does fall within the downtown design overlay district, and the applicability of this downtown design overlay district to the proposed site improvements could be interpreted in multiple ways. For the volleyball courts and the yard game area, a rendering was submitted for the pergola and bandshell, but not for the other site improvements. Visual and aesthetic implum- applications, implications still exist with the installation of the outdoor recreation area and the construction of the non-residential accessory building. Staff would recommend that required fencing and netting for the volleyball yard game area be decorative in nature, matching the other downtown features, such as historic lights. And regarding lights, the applicant has not submitted a lighting plan or proposed lighting for the project. However, given that the operational hours of the use could be in the evening and the nighttime, if lighting is to be installed, we would require that the applicant submit a lighting plan that meets the requirements. And to summarize, the proposed outdoor recreation use is compatible with the existing overnight lodging, restaurant, and tavern uses on property. Additionally, the effects on the natural environment are minimal. The suitability of the site for the proposed use is questionable, given the improvements, the location of them on the property, and the site's location within the downtown design overlay district. Additionally, there are safety concerns, lax, lack of details for dimensional standards, lack of details about the operational hours and, and lighting, which has led staff to recommend only approval of the volleyball courts, subject to several recommended conditions. And staff would recommend the applicant provide greater detail on the bandshell accessory structure as reference, which could be, a future request can be, can be made to amend the conditional use permit to include this bandshell use and accessory building. So, recommendations to approve the request for the conditional use permit to operate and construct volleyball courts. The following conditions being decorative fencing and netting to be installed along East Grand Avenue for the outdoor recreation use, to protect pedestrian and vehicular traffic, to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. The applicant shall provide the information on the hours of operation. The volleyball court shall meet a ten-foot minimum setback from all lot lines. A lighting plan must be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department, if lighting is to be included in the project. All applicable building permits shall be obtained, and minor modifications to the plan shall be permitted to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. That is it.
Thank you. Commission, questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the public hearing. At this time, I call for the first time, for anyone in support of this, to step forward. I call for a second time, anyone in support of this, please step forward. And for a third time, anyone in support, please step forward. And I call for the first time, anyone against this, moving forward, please step forward. For the second time, anyone against, please step forward. And for a third time, anyone against, please step forward. At this time, I'm closing the public hearing, was opened at four twenty-one and closed at four twenty-two. And Commission, what are your wishes?
I have, I'd like to interject quickly, Mayor.
Yep.
If I can. And I, the applicant, he can make himself available. I was just trying to send him the link here. If you do have specific questions for the applicant, he may jump on here shortly. In regards to the public hearing, I just want to backtrack quickly and note, we did receive two emails from concerned citizens, one being William D. Haskell at three forty-one Oak Street. He was concerned that the lighting could be intense, and he wants to ensure that it does not spill over onto places elsewhere in the downtown. But he is, he does support projects that increase value and vitality in the city. The second one is from Jennifer Dolan at three forty-one Oak Street, same address, who also has concerns to minimize light pollution and the effect that it would have on birds. So, we will include those in the record and make them part of the minutes after the meeting. And I am just now sending the link to the owner. I got an email halfway through the meeting here requesting it. So, I will let you know if he, if he does jump on.
Okay, so, in the meantime, do you want us to move forward with the Commission?
Yeah, I think you continue the conversation. We're available to answer questions. Just wanted to let you know that it's possible that the applicant may be available shortly as well.
Sounds good. Commission, questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. Commissioner. Cal, in your experience with this applicant, there's a lot of missing information. I know we try to make this as efficient as a process as possible, and hence the next agenda item. But was this, in your opinion, or working with the applicant, was this a little bit more rushed, and that's why we don't have quite a bit of information that is required of all applicants? Or what was your experience from your staff?
Yeah, it, it was rushed in terms of, you know, landscaper, or the applicant reaching out to a landscaper that was, you know, all set to do the project, headed on the schedule, and then thought to, you know, contact our office. And we obviously interpret it as a separate use, and it would need a conditional use permit, so they, they quickly, to meet the deadline requirements for the October meeting, they quickly submitted an application. After we received the application, we, we kin, and did, I believe, ask for some additional details in terms of width, dimensions, things of that nature. This is, this year, it's primarily the pursuit of the volleyball courts. I think as they grow, they want to be able to add additional outdoor space, and that's why the bandshell was incorporated as being something as well. Obviously, that's lacking quite a bit of detail, there's no setbacks, they don't have a specific drawing for the bandshell. But the volleyball courts are pretty straightforward, right? They're, they're bounded, excavated, sands brought in, permanent or temporary posts are put in. But as we noted, we have concerns, given their location, proximity to the road, and thus have recommended these six conditions to alleviate some of those concerns.
A follow-up question to the concerns that were emailed. When their lighting plan, if lighting is required, is reviewed, our Community Development Department does consider the light pollution and the impact on our residents in that surrounding area, correct?
We do, yep. We've had, we have specific measurements within commercial and residential districts that the light cannot exceed at the property line. It's a little tough when you have, like in the downtown location, you have a lot of historic street lighting, because now you're trying to measure the lighting coming from the property, as well as the street lighting, because there are buildings right up to the, right up to the property line. But definitely, you know, requiring cutoff fixtures that are directed away from the street, so that any light shedding is, is, you know, in- interior to the lot, rather than along, along East Grand Avenue. And that's part of the reason for the ten-foot setback as well, just to get any lights or any improvements out of that, you know, sidewalk area, along the sidewalk, to create more of a buffer.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I'd just make a comment on the details. I guess I would like to see more of the hours defined for the volleyball, just knowing, you know, what times that's going to be. And then, I guess it would be nice to see more detailed plan for the fencing and the netting, what that's going to look like, or the directions of the volleyball, just kind of a more concrete plan. Then kind of the same thing with the bandshell, I know that's, I wouldn't have that on the table today, but how that parking's going to be around the bandshell, or if they're just going to close off the parking lot, or seating, or how that would look. So, I would like to see more details on both of them.
Any other questions?
Kyle, is this something that we could, without precedence, table until the applicant is able to provide more information at the Commission's request?
You certainly kin. We have had the, the legal public hearing, so if the, the request doesn't change, we wouldn't necessarily have to have another public hearing, because we've given the opportunity to do so. I bring that up because I know they, they are on a timeline, they'd like to do it this year. If it gets pushed off to November, I think it might be a little tough to do, in terms of the weather and the frosts and so forth. But we could look at possibly having a special meeting, you know, a week or two from now, if there are more details. And if that's the case, I'd ask that all the Commissioners really specify what details you guys would like to see.
I guess I'll speak for Mr. Daven, who's already spoken about some of the, I mean, if we want to limit the bureaucracy of slowing down some of the volleyball project that they want to do first, I would just focus on that at this point in time, and really let the applicant know that, obviously, a great deal of information is needed more about the bandshell, but we don't want to stand in the way of, of development, but there is a lot of information lacking here, when it comes to some of the safety things, right on one of our main thoroughfares.
Just to kind of comment on that, kind of the things, like I said, the hours, and then maybe more of a defined setback of how far that is actually going to be from the road, and then the fencing and netting, height of the netting, or even the directions of the volleyball courts. It seems like they're going east-west, but just to make sure.
Were all those questions part of the conditions?
To a certain extent, we have asked for, for hours. The setback we determined should be ten feet. I think that's just based on the use and allowing for fencing to be installed within that ten-foot area, and just to create a better buffer for patrons utilizing the sidewalk. And then it would also allow for vegetation to potentially be added, if they wanted to put up arboritae. put up arborvitas, which could help to block any, any light. The fence condition is in there. Again, it's more arbitrary in nature in that staff would have the authority to, you know, approve something that would meet the code. Netting is, is a little bit different. We don't necessarily address netting in the, the city's fence code. However, there's a section that I think we could tie it to in regards to sports, sports arenas and so forth. We do allow certain nets and fences to exceed height requirements when and where they're protecting, you know, patrons, whether it's at baseball or football games. So I think it could fall under that where they would be allowed to have the netting in excess of the required fence height. But I think it's also, you know, somewhat of a concern, as Liz noted, that, you know, this is the downtown area, it's the historic area. I agree, having the activity, having the event, having, having, you know, the volleyball has a benefit on the downtown. However, if, given recent legislation in conditional uses specifically, they're very tough to deny because if there's conditions we can add upon them to satisfy the concerns, that's the approach that the state legislature has required us to take. So I just remind the, the committee of that, if there are concerns, I guess think about other conditions, or could we clarify the conditions to require perhaps a six-foot tall fence and then, you know, 20 feet of netting if we wanted to provide those specific details? I'm also not an expert when it comes to volleyball. So if, if you wanted to see, you know, a specific, a bid that outlines the fence improvements from a, you know, fence contractor that would have a recommendation, we can certainly postpone for those reasons also. I'll also note, he is not yet on, on the Zoom meeting.
So if he, we have all these conditions on there, and if, if he doesn't meet those conditions, then it just doesn't go into a fact, he can't start building it until the conditions are matter, or is he, how is that going to play out?
We would ask for this information upfront prior to construction. So we'd need to know what type of fencing he's putting in and netting, what type of lighting, if he's pursuing lighting, hours of operation, and, and we'd want an updated site plan showing that 10-foot setback.
Okay. So we could vote this through and it would, with the conditions, and he'd still have to meet all those conditions that we're asking for, whether, instead of waiting to vote on it next month?
Correct.
So commissioners, I guess, would?
I'd feel, I'd feel satisfied with that, given the conditions that you'd laid out. I guess I have reassurance that your department is going to carry this through with the volleyball project alone and then obviously report back with some of the hours of operations and the clarity there. So I'll make a motion to approve with the recommendations that you have with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
You got a motion by Gudrow?
Second.
You got a second by Palmquist?
Matt, can I interject? Sean is available. If, he's, he's on now. Sean, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys. Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for coming on, Sean. It's possible the commission may have a few questions for you, if you're able to take some questions.
Yes, absolutely. Let me just get to the quiet place.
Okay.
Sean, my name is Ben. Yeah, Sean, my name is Ben. I'm one of the commission members. We've discussed your application here and one of the, a couple of the questions that we had were regarding the hours of operations and then the other one was focused on, since it is a downtown area, just the safety plan that you have in place with netting or anything else that would protect pedestrians in that right-of-way on East Grand.
Yes, so for the ballroom court, we'll have the fence up to 15 to 20 feet. And that will protect the right-of-way, you know, from volleyball court to going any ball to the street. For the corner pergola, we have not, we don't have anything right now as a safety net. I don't know if I'm answering the right question.
I think the only other one that you didn't address, sir, was the hours of operation.
I see. Okay, so hours of operation should be until 11 o'clock at evening.
Okay.
For the volleyball court. And for pergola, it will be until the event is over. So we have license for late as a liquor, but we have to go through the committee to see what's the permissions for outdoor recreational as a liquor license.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sean, are you proposing lighting in the volleyball courts?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you proposing the installation of lighting?
We already have a lighting. There is the two poles of lighting there, and there is more lighting right at the patio area as well.
Do you anticipate upgrading the light fixtures on those poles?
Yes, so we already have upgraded recently, but we'll be redoing the lighting on that two poles.
Okay, one, one of the conditions we're recommending is that a lighting plan be submitted for review prior to those improvements being made to ensure that the light isn't blinding to the right-of-way or in excess beyond the boundary of the property line.
Got it. So there is a two, currently two light poles, and they do provide sufficient lighting. We will be adding if there is necessary. So we can go accordingly that way.
Any other questions?
Kyle, offhand, do you know, I think he had stated a 15 or 20-foot fence. Do you know what the requirement would be, or is that a chain link fence, or what we would?
So again, the condition is recommending a, an ornament fence. I would foresee, you know, something that matches or resembles the historic character, like a, it doesn't necessarily have to be black wrought iron, but something that looks like it, perhaps, you know, vinyl, a black vinyl or something. And then the netting would sit above that, is what I would foresee. I think that's more decorative fitting within the downtown district. And again, the netting, you know, if the fence is six to eight feet tall, you know, I can see the netting be another 10 to 15 on top of that. Perhaps in the off-season, the netting is removed so that, again, you're not, you know, you don't, you don't have that obtrusive kind of netting up year-round. That could be added to the condition as well if, if you want to protect the aesthetics of the site in the downtown.
Correct. It will be a black color synthetic vinyl fence. It's like a nylon type of fence.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm comfortable with, I guess, staff kind of making those, reviewing those things if there's concerns, bringing them forward. I just had a question, we do have a motion and a second, but now that we have the hours of operation, should we put that in there? Because right now, he's going to get the permit, just says he has to provide hours, but should we define those hours?
You certainly kin, address that in the third condition, or no, second condition.
I'll amend my motion to include those hours no later than 11 o'clock PM.
My second remains.
All right, so we have an amended motion by Gudrow, second by Palmquist. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, for Sean, can you clarify what the motion is in terms of the approval and then the denial?
Ken, would you?
Okay. So Sean, there was a, there was a recommendation ultimately to approve the request as recommended by staff. So basically approving the volleyball courts, but not the, not the band shell pergola. There's some missing information that we'd need before the Plan Commission feels comfortable in approving or reviewing the band shell and the pergola. But the motion today is to approve the volleyball courts with the six conditions outlined in the staff report, one of which has been amended to include the hours of operation not to exceed 11, 11 PM.
Okay. Yes, that's agreeable, absolutely.
All right, got our motion and our second. No more questions or comments, or seeing none. We'll move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Sean, for joining us.
All right. All right, thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Okay, good night.
Item 4, 24-002102, Community Development Department, Public Hearing and Action on a Request to Amend the Zoning Code, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code, specifically Appendix A, Land Use Matrix in Division 5 and 6, Site Plan and Plan of Operation Architectural Review to Modify the Secondary Review Requirements for Uses. Kyle, Mr. Curran?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item was before you last month for preliminary discussion and feedback. I believe a majority of the Plan Commissioners were in support of this. This was also called out at the council meeting with an order wanting action as soon as possible. So again, any, any zoning code amendment requires recommendation from Plan Commission and then final approval by council. The memo is very similar to what it was previously, where I've identified a number of uses that would no longer require Plan Commission review, meaning that if somebody were doing a restaurant or constructing a restaurant, they would still have to meet all the setback standards, the architectural standards, the lighting standards, parking, landscaping. But that review would only go to city staff through the permitting process, no different than like a building renovation. If somebody's renovating a building, they submit building plans to our office and then they're reviewed prior to a permit being issued. So again, there have been a number of, a number of those uses outlined in the use table that are being removed from that, that Plan Commission review. So if you, and then there's an associated amendment in Division 5 that clarifies where there's an asterisk in the use table, that is signifying Plan Commission review. Because the secondary review standards will remain, architectural review, site plan review, but what we've done is clarified which secondary review standards have to go to Plan Commission for review. So if you reference the attachment, Appendix A, you'll see the highlighted uses that still will require Plan Commission review. They have an asterisk behind them, so you'll see secondary review. This is on page 48 of 53. For example, a greenhouse still has to, has to go through the site plan review process, plan of operations, and, and get a conditional use. So most of what's been changed relate to permitted uses, where you see a P. Most of the conditional uses still will require the Plan Commission review for both the conditional use permit and the site plan architectural landscaping reviews. So you can go down the list and the ones that are highlighted are the ones that will still require Plan Commission review. We feel as though this is, again, an appropriate way to kind of streamline approvals, giving staff the authority to ensure the secondary review is, you know, being done and then obviously we, we'd be able to issue a permit at that same time or shortly thereafter. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
I just have one, Kyle, and it could be a real short answer, but I'm in support of streamlining this process, as I spoke to at the last commission meeting. How was the selection from your department of the certain ones that required certain permitting or processes? And how was that process done? Was it just looked at across the board regionally of what is standard for a lot of these permitting processes? And this is just the streamlined fashion of what is being done in, within your industry, then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a step back and note, you know, zoning was created primarily to separate uses. So you'd have your commercial districts, 8th Street. You'd have your residential districts in a number of our residential neighborhoods. You can't obviously operate a restaurant in a residential district. For, for a while, that, that was the standard, right? If you, if you were zoned commercial, you could construct your restaurant, get a building permit, there was no secondary review. You still had to submit a site plan and you still had to, right, meet the setback standards. You still had to work through engineering office, get your stormwater permits and stuff. Over time, zoning transitioned to more of a form-based design to try to create more conformity with regards to development, to make sure there were additional standards like some sort of brick or stone within the building and landscaping along the street and parking behind the building to get the building close, to create a more walkable environment. So these form-based standards were integrated into a lot of the zoning codes, some of which were integrated in our 2018 zoning rewrite. And along with that, they said, we're going to make, we're just going to blanketly require secondary review for all new development within the zoning code. So that's why everything pretty much had to come to Plan Commission. You'll find other communities that have it that way and you'll find other communities that don't. You know, the, the Madisons, Appletons, a lot of them have more of a form-based code and require more of a review. I think they're generally, you know, more dense in nature, they're, they're not, they're not the same community as Wisconsin Rapids. And then you'll find other ones like Stevens Point, where if, if it's a permitted use, you know, you've just got to meet the requirements and you can get your building permit. So what we've tried to do is look at the uses, and I try to think about more intense uses, right? So in airport or bulk fuel storage, right? They are more intense in that they could have negative impact to the surrounding property owners. So I think through the conditional use permit process, through the secondary review process, we can ensure that it is a good site design that's fitting at the location and within the neighborhood and is not going to be detrimental to the public. So that's the, the impetus for looking at the uses, you know, hobby kennel or any sort of, you know, kennel or outdoor space, I think where large, large crowds are. You want to make sure you have proper ingress, egress. You want to make sure that there's safety there, FD has access, you know, that it's not going to be detrimental to any residents surrounding it. So that's the way it was looked at, and that's the way it's been recommended to you guys is, you know, primarily in regards to the, any detrimental nature or, you know, dense sort of intense use was still recommended to come before Plan Commission for that secondary review.
All right, thank you. I have no more.
When you say new development, we're talking about an entirely new piece of development, like developing a new hotel? Or is it new development on a property?
It's, most of this pertains to new construction and additions. Right now, if there's an existing building, if it's a permitted use, let's say there's a retail building on 8th Street and they want to convert it to a restaurant. If all of the improvements are on the interior of the building, they don't need to come to Plan Commission right now because it's an existing building, it's got existing parking, it's got existing access. We still perform a review on our end to make sure, right, that they're not doing an addition, that they're not making major changes to the exterior. But that's done internally on our end. That's a use change ultimately. So this primarily pertains to new construction through new development on vacant lots or additions or demolitions and then new construction. Does that clarify it?
Yeah, absolutely. I wanted to make sure we were putting rules in place that allow us to streamline that new development and have it conform with what we're requesting and not prohibit people from doing those upgrades, like putting a fence in to protect their, to block their garbage cans, that
Sure.
we have a way to be able to review the requirements and discuss them, not in the cases of new construction or new development. I'm absolutely supportive of this. I do think that it would be helpful or beneficial I do think that it would be helpful or beneficial for the council and likely also this commission to see a list, or if you do conduct that review and write, write the report similarly to have that at least in the meetings, so that we're able to see what's going on.
So like, like an update on, you know, how many commercial projects have been done monthly?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, we can, we can try to do that, yes.
Yeah, I think I was going to say the same thing, just kind of a, not a full report, but just kind of knowing that a site plan was conducted for this. And also, so we kind of know, you know, what, things are getting approved, so if something does come to us for a different one, we're kind of still on the same page of what is being approved on other ones. And you guys would know that, but just kind of a end of the meeting report or something.
Yeah, it might go a long ways in improving and validating this process is working when we're seeing work in the background being done efficiently, where it doesn't need to go through all these steps and processes, and a little bit more streamlined.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that, try to do that monthly and just run a report through our permitting software.
Anyone else? So we would, typically, this would be for passing things, like this is, this fits what we need and going, we can move forward. If it's something you have to say no to, is that when you would kind of bring it back? Or if you say no, like, it's really just according to the site plan and the rules of that, and there's no real, there wouldn't be a real way around it? Or how would they, how would they move forward?
Yeah, so, you know, let's say Marshfield Clinic, they did a new building. It came before planning commission for site plan review. That, that would ultimately just come to us for that site plan and zoning review and architectural review. And if they had a site plan that showed a 20-foot setback, we would obviously review it, and then we would follow up with a detailed review sheet that said, you know, you're not meeting the setback standards on Highway 54, you need to, you know, meet a 25-foot setback. You're 100 points short on your landscape standards, please resubmit the, so basically, it goes back in their court for them to submit the proper information to us before we can issue the building permit and approve that zoning review.
Okay.
Ultimately, we're, we're doing that through the staff memo and the planning commission process already. And it would just remove having to wait for planning commission, you know, schedule the next planning commission meeting, have to be at the meeting, wait for, you know, the, the planning commission to take action on it, and then the following day issue the permit. We're basically removing that secondary review. So everything still happens internally the same way. It's just planning commission has taken out of the review for several of the items in the use table.
Is this, what kind of impact does this have on, like, new construction's kind of easier, just because they should be able to figure out how to make it all work? But when you, when it's additions and stuff like that, where you run into tricky situations, how does that play out in terms of the yes, no? And if it's a no, then do they still, you know, is there a way of, how does that work?
So the, the process now doesn't change. If there's somebody that wants to do something that doesn't meet the code, they go to the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board can grant a variance ultimately. They need to have, you know, meet separate criteria, but ultimately, zoning board would hold that authority to grant exceptions to the zoning code.
Okay, so, so it would have, if there is that, it would have to come to planning, to the commission, and then go through the zoning board of appeals?
It would just go to zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Right? If we said, you've got to meet the 25-foot setback, and they said, nope, we want to do a 20-foot setback, then we would say, okay. You'd have to go through zoning board of appeals to get that exception to the code.
Okay. So they're not losing out on, okay.
Similar, similar to that, if you said you need 10 more points of green space, and they said, no, we don't want to have 10 more points, we think we have enough trees, would that come to the planning commission, or would it go back to them until they meet our requirements?
No, it would not go back to them, or it would not go back to the planning commission. Ultimately, we are responsible for holding them to the standard that they, that then we would, we would not issue any permits until that standard is met, unless the, the planning commission require, requires an exception. So like, right now, the code says you have to have 35, I believe it's 35% of your parking can only be up front on 8th Street. However, planning commission can approve up to 50%. So if Starbucks had 42% of their parking out front along 8th Street, we as staff would say, we can only approve 35% through the site plan process. If you want to pursue 42%, you've got to go to planning commission to get the exception, because that's specifically called out in the zoning code.
Okay.
For something that's not called out, like setbacks, setbacks are clear. If you're in the B2 district, you got to have a 25-foot front yard setback. That's what we're requiring through the zoning review process prior to issuing any permits. The only way they can deviate from that is going to zoning board of appeals to get a variance.
Okay.
Is there a way in our software to, or your software, when you're documenting and working through these approvals, to document the amount of times certain items get sent back to applicants?
Not within our permitting system. We could measure, you know, the day we receive an application in terms of, you know, it's entered into my GOV, our permit software, and then the time it takes for us to issue the permit. So we'd have a start date, and then we'd have an issue date. We could measure the time in between. There are things, though, where, for more larger projects, let's call it corporate projects like Starbucks or Caribou, where they will have a design team submit a site plan preliminary in nature to us for review, even before they submit building permits or anything, just to make sure that they're not missing anything within our review standards. A lot of times, we'll, we'll call that a pre-application meeting. Before they submit, we get on, you know, teams, or they show up here, we sit down in the office, and we walk through all of the requirements internally. Then it goes back in their court. Sometimes they're quick to respond, sometimes, like corporate companies will queue it up on a timeline for, you know, fiscal year '25, and then we don't, like Walmart, we approved Walmart two years ago, and they came back and amended it, and then they started work earlier this year, and it just got finalized last month. And that was a two-year process, not because we were delayed, but because they were on a different timeframe, and through the corporate process needed to get the approvals prior to getting the funding.
Great. Still supportive. I just want to make sure that we have a, a plan or a way to identify certain things, because I know that you're held to what the code says to hold the businesses to in our, their specific districts. But if we have a way to identify what needs to be changed at a council level, we can take that up through legislative if need be. But if you have a way to identify those things, we can take that up in a separate.
Yeah, in the first memo last month, I mentioned that there would be additional ordinance amendments in regards to our parking standards, our driveway standards, landscaping standards, again, to try to simplify some of those standards. Because we're in the middle of the construction season, or the end of the construction season, I do not, I do not want to amend those until we're in December, January, when we're not issuing asphalt permits and new construction is slowed.
Yeah, makes sense. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, did you hold a public?
Nope.
I have no further.
Thank you very much.
Unless anybody else does.
Good to go.
Yep, you can open the public hearing.
All right. Opening the public hearing at 4:58. I call for the first time, anyone in favor of this, please step forward. Second time, anyone in favor of this, please step forward. Third time, anyone in favor, please step forward. First time, anyone opposed, please step forward. Second time, anyone opposed, please step forward. Third time, anyone opposed, opposed, please step forward. And I will close the public hearing at 4:59. Now, commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve as outlined in the staff report.
I got a motion by Gudrow.
A second.
Second by Donovan. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. Item 5, staff updates. Mr. Kearns?
I just wanted to note that the foundry project, we'd received some dollars to do a foundry redevelopment plan. The city is looking to potentially take ownership of the foundry over here from the county, and we were able to get some DNR and EPA dollars to do a kind of reassessment reuse plan, and that was finalized last month. It's available on the city's website. Hopefully, will, will be referenced or utilized once we have that site cleaned up and the building demolished. We can share that with developers. But the public was integral in providing comment on that plan. That leads us to the downtown master plan. The consultant will be in town this Wednesday through Friday. There'll be several open houses that the consultant will be conducting at different locations. Those locations are available on the city website. They've been posted on our Facebook page and so forth. The downtown master plan will likely come before the planning commission for a preliminary review in the next one to two months, probably not November, but perhaps December, and that may be a joint meeting with common council, or we may have them separately. So that's nearing completion, and I think that does it for what I wanted to update you guys on.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, takes me to item 6, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Gudrow.
Second.
Second by Palmquist. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. Meeting closes at 5:01 PM. Thank you, everybody.